Good afternoon. This is February 11, 2025. This is a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners and the City of Oak Harbor City Council. And the Board of County Commissioners is now reconvening our regular session to meet in a joint meeting with the Oak Harbor City Council to discuss the Oak Harbor UGA. Mayor Wright, do you need to call?
So, good afternoon. As we have a quorum, I will call the City of Oak Harbor Special Joint Meeting with the Island County Board of Commissioners to order. For the minutes, I note the following council members are in attendance. There's myself, there is our city administrator Sabrina Combs, Development Services Director David Cool, Principal Planner Kat Kamak, and City Clerk Julie Nester, as well as City Council Member Brian Stuckey, Barbara Arms, James Marrow, and Jim Weisner. I know that Eric Marshall is running late. He's on his way. And I believe Chris Widenstein is participating remotely. So I just wanted to quickly thank both my staff and the staff of Island County for planning today's meeting. Both the city and county are faced with comprehensive planning updates, including countywide planning policies. This is our second joint meeting to review and discuss land use policies and regulations of mutual interest. Although members of both staff have met several times since our last meeting in April of last year, I'm looking forward to meaningful, productive, and civil discussion of how to best meet the challenges for planning boundaries and zoning and housing allocations.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Island County Commissioner Melanie Beak, and then I'm the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners this year. And I appreciate everyone for being here today to discuss our 2025 comprehensive plans. Today's meeting is to follow up on the letters that were exchanged between the county and the city last fall and to identify a way forward. First, I'll give some background. The county and municipalities worked together collaboratively last year to revise the countywide planting, planning policies. Those policies were adopted by the county and ratified by all three jurisdictions unanimously. Together, we agreed the cities and town in Island County would take a larger share of the housing during this comprehensive plan update because municipalities are best equipped to plan for dense housing types and the services needed to support the new housing. Oak Harbor agreed at that time to accommodating forty-one percent of the necessary housing at the zero to fifty percent average median income level. And then the municipalities began to work on their land capacity analyses, and that's when we started seeing differences of opinion. Oak Harbor Planning Department came up with their proposed numbers, which did not include the agreed upon forty-one percent at the zero to fifty percent AMI. The county's planning department then sent a letter to Oak Harbor in October in response to your land capacity analysis, in which we proposed options for accommodating more density in the city. In November, Oak Harbor's mayor responded to the county's proposal. The primary concern the county raised in our letter to Oak Harbor in October is that the city's proposed options for increasing density within the city limits would accommodate just twenty-five percent of the necessary housing at the zero to fifty percent income levels, not the forty-one percent we require within your city limits. The city's proposed housing numbers for the UGA include seventy percent at the zero to fifty percent AMI level into the UGA. That would defer the majority of the dense housing to the UGA where services and infrastructure do not exist. The county is concerned that the city's proposed approach to distributing housing between the city limits and the UGA is inconsistent with our countywide planning policies and with the RCWs and WACS governing this process. Through staff-level meetings and small group meetings between our board and the city council, we have discussed these concerns, but we still haven't been able to get on the same page. We are hoping through our conversation today to collaborate on a vision for how Oak Harbor can better accommodate growth. I want to talk for a minute about infill redevelopment or upzoning as a possible solution for the city. State laws under the Growth Management Act have continued to emphasize infill development in cities, and the county would like to see Oak Harbor proactively adopt infill as a strategy for meeting their housing numbers. Infill redevelopment benefits cities in many ways. It allows redevelopment to pay for replacement of aging infrastructure. It centralizes housing with services to create more walkable communities, and it creates more jobs through commercial growth in mixed-use developments. The Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs, that Island County adopted last year in collaboration with many partners, including Oak Harbor, prioritizes funding for projects in existing business districts like the one in downtown Oak Harbor. There will be more state and local funding available to Oak Harbor for this type of infill redevelopment. One example, just one, of how Oak Harbor could encourage infill redevelopment could be if you were to rezone the triangle area roughly delineated by Highway 20, Pioneer, and Midway to higher densities. If you were to do that rezoning, then over time redevelopment would occur that would allow more diversity in housing types through mixed-use development. That's just one example of how you could meet your zero to fifty percent AMI number. Our purpose here today is to collaborate with you on ideas like that. We know some level of UGA expansion might be necessary, and we're willing to have that conversation with you in order to find a way for you to achieve the forty-one percent the county needs from you. You are the policymakers for your city, the legislative authority. The decisions you make on this are how you will take care of your people, your citizens of today, and your residents of tomorrow by planning for them. We are asking you to direct your staff to work with our staff to evaluate a variety of options for future growth. And in that discussion, instead of placing all or most of the future dense housing in the UGA, we would like to hear from you that the city council is willing to consider an infill strategy to accommodate more of the zero to fifty percent income levels within your city limits. Thank you. Do either of my colleagues have anything to add to those comments? All right, then we're going to turn the conversation over to the City of Oak Harbor to share their perspectives on the Oak Harbor UGA discussions to date.
So, we've already presented in multiple meetings what our plan was, and we're happy to continue that conversation. But we haven't seen the same thing from your side. We're asking for what your plan is and how it differs from what ours is. That's what we're looking for. We've presented a plan. We've brought a consultant to those meetings. We've entertained conversation back and forth, but we haven't seen the same thing from your side.
For starters, I don't think we have side. I, I, I think we need to start off with the fact that this is the county's comprehensive plan and that each municipality submits a plan to us and it gets merged into it. So our allocation, population allocation, is our plan. We have said, and you have agreed, that this is the population that you will take within the city, the city boundaries. This is the growth that you will be taking. So we are asking for a plan that we can defend when we go to the Growth Hearings Board. If, if there's an expansion, if there's no expansion, we don't need a defensible plan.
Right.
But, but every conversation has indicated that there's a desire for expansion. So in order to have that, we need to be able to demonstrate that Oak Harbor has absorbed enough growth with its future zoning decisions, right? Not, not today's buildable lands analysis, but what you are able to accomplish given changes to your zoning in order for us to be able to defend and justify any type of expansion. It's not for us to give you a plan for your city. It is for you to tell us how you're going to accommodate the growth that we've already, we collectively, you as the city council voted for it, already agreed to. You said you're going to take five thousand plus people. I mean, I wrote an entire editorial about the fact that I thought cities were taking too much. And if we don't like the allocation, we need to change the formula. We took the allocation, we being the city. I put myself in the city's shoes right there, because it's my hometown. So we took the allocation. Now we're locked in at five thousand some people. What we're saying is we don't have a plan from you that is defensible because you have to take forty-one percent of that AMI number. We don't have a plan for that right now. That was in the countywide planning policies also. We don't have a plan for that right now. So, so I don't understand why you're waiting for a plan for us. We don't do planning for you. Now, I'm happy to do it. As you know, I'll take over anything, but I don't think any of us want that. We want your city to tell us how you want to grow. What do you want to look like with five thousand more people? All we're saying is you're taking this five thousand number and you're taking forty percent, one percent of AMI. And then, and how you get there is what we need to start defending your decisions. That's really all we're asking for. So I don't know why you're waiting for a plan from us, because...
So I think, I think where we were, Jill, is we thought we had presented the plan with the max that we could take, and that's what we came to the table with. And I'm still speaking. I know it seems like I'm done, but I'm not. I'm still speaking. So, again, we're, so what we're doing is we're now asking partner with us and work with us to help us understand how we can take more. You're, you're giving us an option. Our consultants and our planners are saying that's not feasible. So then you came back and your next recommendation was to go to mediation, which we agreed to do. And now we're moving forward with that process, and now you want to have this meeting where we're trying to work through the mediation process at your request.
You're right. It is at the county's request.
Okay.
That we do this collaboratively. That also applies to tone and body language. So let's rein ourselves in a little bit, because I can do what you're doing and nobody wants that.
That's all you do to me, though.
Yeah, but excuse me, excuse me, both of you.
So, not both of us. I didn't do it, Jill. I didn't, Melanie. So, what we're saying to you, Mayor, is that we understand that all things being the same today, there is not enough capacity in the city. Right. That's your existing buildable lands analysis. What we're asking for is your plan for the future on how you're going to accommodate growth. What zoning changes are you proposing? Where can you put more density? What will it look like twenty years from now? This is not a, you have to fit this in with your existing zoning conversation. This is a conversation about, you could put... Why don't you bring Kat up? Because this was our whole concern, is that the only person defending your argument is Kat.
No, but I'm not going to sit here and speak to you about the entire plan when he can do it in a much better way than I can for you.
So my, my point is that what we, this is not, so the county also has to absorb the AMI density, right? We have zoning right now that does not allow us to do that. So we're going to have to look at our raids or lamarids, whichever one you want to call it. We're going to have to look at our non-municipal urban growth areas, and we're going to have to say, how are we going to get more density in these areas?
We're not disagreeing with that position, or not.
So if I were to say, and this is where I think some of us are confused, me in particular, if you were to put twenty-story skyscrapers on every single lot in the city, you could accommodate thousands of people. Now, obviously, we're not asking you to do that, nor would we. I mean, I've lived there. It's my hometown, right? I don't want that either. But you have the potential to accommodate that level of growth. So to tell us that you can't get to forty-one percent AMI means that you're not considering rezoning. And I know you are. So my question is, why do you believe that you can't rezone in order to meet the AMI allocation?
I think there's a fundamental roadblock somewhere, because there, there seems to be this impression on the county side that the city is just being uncooperative. And from our perspective, the consultants that we've hired, the experts we've consulted, the staff we have working on it, from our perspective, everything we're hearing is that we are doing everything that we physically, legally, and theoretically could do to, to proceed and cannot get there because we are bound by our current code, our current regulations. If we, because we've talked about ideas for all of this great stuff we could do in the future. But there, I think the hiccup is we are working within one framework and not within a hypothetical. So I think that it would be probably more productive if we got someone from our, someone's planning department up here to clear that up.
Partly where we're concerned, though, is that this is a planning document. This is a twenty-year, in the future, this is how we're going to get from A to Z.
And we are considering rezoning.
So that's not a point-in-time analysis. That is a, here is what our future will look like when we take on these activities. So we're rezoning in this comp plan process. We're doing our policy work. We're looking at our land use allocations. We're trying to figure out where we can put density in the appropriate places. So I think you're exactly right. This is where we have the impasse, which is if you're not going through an exercise on future planning and land use changes to accommodate future growth, and you're trying to plan based on today, that's not what the exercise is. The exercise is what changes do you need to make to accommodate future growth? That's the whole exercise.
So Mayor, excuse me, Ms. Hazan, has the, has the city council talked about changing any zoning, rezoning any areas within the board?
Multiple, multiple times. I mean, we brainstormed just here in this room with county staff about things that we could hypothetically, theoretically do about building up and these, I mean, there's, there have been a number of ideas. It's the, it's the point at which those can be implemented, I think, is where we're getting held up with the document.
Yeah, we, I don't think the county or the state expects it to be implemented. We do expect some plan to be documented that we are going to rezone this particular area or that particular area in order to accommodate this type of growth in the future.
So the, the specific triangle zone that we're all referring to has been analyzed by our consultants. And there was a map, I believe, that we introduced in one of the sessions, and I, do you not have that today, or do you have that? Okay, so we have that again to show, like, even if we were to go through and rezone all of these R4, there's still going to be a short, we're still going to be short a number of units. I don't have that exact number off the top of my head. He's got all of those details back there. So we are, we are considering all of these changes. So, you know, I think in, in discussions with Councilmember Weisner, that he had with Commissioner Johnson individually, as well as Councilmember Stuckey, I don't know, although I haven't spoke with him individually, I've spoken with all the other councilmembers. I believe, you know, there, there's agreement between us that we need to do some rezoning in those areas, but then there's still, there's still going to be a shortfall that where we're going to have to expand into the UGA.
We understand.
Yeah, I know. I, I'm just, what I'm saying is I'm getting there.
Yeah.
And then there's going to be development that's going to have to occur there. And then that's where I think the primary difference in our philosophy for how that looks for the redevelopment goes. I understand, and again, I wasn't privy to the conversations. I got everything secondhand. But Councilmember Weisner, do you want to share more into that conversation about if we expanded, expanded, annexed, and then how we, how we develop in those areas?
Well, I think it's, it's actually a discussion that we're in the midst of, I think we call that our, what are we referring that to? Our central business district or our, and, and we've been talking about redevelopment calls in central business district. In fact, one of the conversations we've been having is going from a four, four-story maximum to a five-story maximum. And that conversation has been taking place before this exercise came about, right? And it does seem from a, from a natural, that triangle, and that, and that triangle is exactly where that conversation is taking place at. I just don't know for a fact whether or not we, you know, poured those, pre-poured those numbers in yet. But that certainly has been a point of conversation, though ifs, ands, or buts about it. And we started that conversation probably a year, year and a half ago about what does that triangle look like in the future. And we do realize that is that we have not only a shortage of low AMI housing that should, you know, be in a commercial core, right? So that people can walk. But that, that we've got a shortage of commercial. And I think one of the things that came out of the buildable lands analysis was with our current, current zoning, we can only create twelve hundred and forty-eight new jobs with what we've got on commercial land and twelve hundred and forty-eight jobs for fifty-five hundred new households. Obviously, that doesn't match. And so I think we've been looking at that triangle for also that, that commercial zone. It, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag right now. You know, we've got Office RO and we've got C3 mixed in. We've got quite a bit of C3 currently, I think, in that zone that is housing residential right now, which, you know, should be a kind of a mixed use. I guess the issue is, is how optimistic can we all get about redevelopment? You know, how much of that can be purchased, tore down, built back, built better? We can be an optimist and say, okay, if we, if we zone it, it will come. Or we can be the pessimist and say, well, you know, there's only going to be a, a very minimal percentage of that redeveloped. I know some of that percentage comes out in the countywide planning policy. I think fifty percent is the number in it.
Yes, Jill, excuse me, Janet.
So when you said, if we zone it, they may come, but if you don't zone it, it won't happen, right? I mean, that's, I think, what we're struggling is when you say we don't rezone, because we can't make these numbers work. But we know that if it doesn't get rezoned, it will never happen, right? You cannot, you're, you're positing a, a null hypothesis, right? So I think you have to say that you have, what we're asking is help us understand what are the rezoned, I appreciated the four-story to five-story, what are the rezoning and capacity elements that help us reach the targets? And, and then those get evaluated. And they don't, it's, these happen over the next twenty years, right? They get docketed over multiple years as code changes. But then those hypothetical, those zoning changes create the hypotheticals that allow for the infill density. Does that make, am I making sense? So I think that's the thing where I kind of go, well, you can't say if we don't do it, because if you don't do it, of course, we won't get the capacity, right? You have to do it to get the capacity.
I don't, I don't think anyone is saying we're not...
Yeah, no one's disagreeing with that. So I think that what the county was asking, it sounds like you're, you're in agreement to that the city council is willing to consider an infill strategy to accommodate more of the zero to fifty percent income levels within your city limits. That's what I'm hearing you say, that you are willing to consider that.
Working with our consultants and working through the process to see what the max number is that we can deliver and working through that process.
Okay.
That's what we're working for. So do you want to speak more?
Infill has been a priority in our last...
And you have agreed to the, the population numbers that were done in our first year agreements, right? Planning agreements. You have, we've all agreed to those population numbers.
Yeah, the obvious thing to agree.
Tara, that's a question.
Forty-one percent AMI.
Right, that, that the requirements of the comp plan that are the population of fifty-five hundred, give or take, and the forty-one, and then it has to have the same AMI that is required by statute from the state. Are we in agreement on those numbers and those AMI numbers?
To my knowledge, yes. And, and we recognize, and you could come back to us and say, well, commissioners, we, if we do this triangle, we do this, we make, we, we think that we can get thirty-eight percent or whatever, whatever. You know, we are totally, totally open to having the conversation about expanding the UGA, but we just cannot take all of that density into the UGA.
As a question, when we're talking about the UGA and expanding, one thing that's talked about a couple of times is annex as well. Since, as I understand, you guys can only handle so much density in the UGA, where an annex would allow us to do a lot more density. Is that something that's been discussed much at the county level?
Annexations require voter approval, correct? And so there is a process to annexate.
I don't...
Well, there is a process that says voter approvals needed, but also it is in the city's UGA. It's already inherently yours. And so to, you, you can annex a UGA at any, at any point. You need that voter approval, but it's yours. And you, it's part of your formula equation. It really is not part of our formula equation, because that boundary says this is where the city is going to be. So that has to be looked at from the city perspective, not as a county density, but as a city density. Even if it is in the county right now, it's intended to be yours. And I think the other, other point about like the forty-one percent and getting close is that this is really a conversation about our ability to defend your numbers. And it's based in historic knowledge that when this county was given undefensible numbers by the city in the past, the city lost at the Growth Management Hearings Board, because the hearings board said you don't have enough to defend that expansion. Our own numbers show that you probably need an expansion. We, we aren't disagreeing with that. What we are saying is, based on past history, if we go to the hearings board with an unjustifiable number, that what they have done is say you don't get that growth, and you will put your population in your existing city limits, urban growth area. I don't think that that's tenable. I think that that is too much pressure. But we've got to hit these justifiable marks, so that when we go and say to the hearings board, hey, this is why we gave this level of expansion, that we can show that everybody's done all they can do. So at forty-one percent, it's like we, we hit your deliverables, hearings board. We, they've accommodated everything they can accommodate, and we still need some growth. But if we don't hit those numbers, it's a guaranteed loss, because we've already lost, we being the city. Oak Harbor's, I get confused. Oak Harbor's already lost on this issue. We, the county knows the outcome of this. Once that happens and the hearing board says no, you're shoved back into your boundaries. And now you've got five thousand people in the existing city limits that you're going to have to figure out where to put. And that's not where we want anybody to be. That's why we're holding fast to these numbers, is we've got to give our legal teams the tools to defend. And we defend. You don't. We defend. It's our plan submitted to the state, and the county defends your decisions. And we're telling you, we don't have the defense.
Let me see if I can clarify.
Give your name for the record.
Kat Kamak, Principal Planner, City of Oak Harbor. Just want to clarify a couple of things that may hopefully help with maybe perspectives, or maybe a way to look forward. So the allocation that was done, the fifty-five hundred and around numbers, it was done to the city and the UGA. It wasn't done only to the city of Oak Harbor. So it was a joint effort to tackle the fifty-five hundred. Because if it were allocated only to the city, it would have been a different number. Because the city knew from the very get-go that there was no ability by itself to tackle fifty-five hundred. No way. There's no zoning and development patterns.
I'm sorry, I'm interrupting. My apologies.
Oh, no. So that's, that's our understanding of it. So it was assigned to the UGA, because with collaboration, we can look jointly at addressing the entire allocation. That was the five thousand five hundred. So it's not the responsibility of only the city to take that. It is the joint responsibility, because it's assigned to both the city and the UGA. And I think that's important to determine, because that changes responsibility and expectation.
But only one municipality can have ownership. I mean, only one, you're only under one set of zoning codes right now, right? So help me understand how you can have dual ownership of a population. Because our understanding was that when we did the allocations to the municipalities, yes, it included your urban growth area for you to expand into, because the county's jurisdiction is right now limited to what we're limited to, right? The urban growth area is intended to be for city. So if you need to expand, why would you not expand and take that at city density? Why would you have the county put in density that's lower?
Which is exactly where we are in the process right now. So I think everybody is maybe skipping steps that we are undergoing right now, which are important, looking into a lot of the steps that are yet to come. So, the idea of trying to get that UGA into the city, into city density is what is happening right now in terms of our discussion with the county. Trying to get annexed and bringing the land into the city, so that the city can look at that land and calculate it based on city density. So that's one of the things that has been proposed. Another clarification, I don't think, and I don't believe so, that the county-wide planning policies... that the countywide planning policies have any stipulation on how the AMI would be distributed between city and U- UGA. That is something that came much later in the process. So this forty-one percent AMI accommodation in the city is not a magical number, it's not agreed upon anywhere.
Isn't it in the, we didn't, we agree on the HAP stool?
We agreed on the HAP tool.
And the HAP stool says what is the allocation?
It's the allocation for the entire UGA, not for the city.
As well as city limits, we know that.
But it's still forty-one percent.
Forty-one percent is the city share using the HAP stool, correct?
Including the UGA.
So even if, even if we, even if it's forty-one percent, the task is to determine whether there is capacity or not. I think that is what is being done right now. So all the tools that we have used, all the documents that we have shared, is doing the analysis to determine whether there's capacity. And the city's LCA documents that were transmitted and is talked about right now has the capacity, as done by the countywide planning policy and all the rules that we've agreed to. It also considers development regulation changes, which is what Commerce asks us to do, which is what the height regulations are. So based on that height regulation changes, they have revisited the land's capacity and determined how much more. And then there are also areas identified for rezoning or for capturing more density. So the city has done all the three steps to determine. So if you, in the city of Old Cover has ten thousand units or so, and it's taking thirty-five hundred, that's a thirty-five percent increase over twenty years. And that is a lot for any city. I mean, even if you look at the permit uh trajectory in the most hating of development, we didn't have that much. So the counties, now, we are doing the steps, and so the county has done the LCA land's capacity analysis, and also determined that there's no capacity. So we know there's no capacity for fifty-five hundred units.
Not enough capacity. It didn't determine there was no capacity. The county's determined there's not enough.
Not enough capacity.
Okay, well, that's an important clarification.
There's not enough capacity in the city or the UGA for the fifty-five hundred and thirty-three units that were been allocated. The city has looked at rezoning already. The county has not, at least not that we know of.
We gave a chart, I don't mean to interrupt, but we gave a chart that shows a shortfall. That is, shows that the forty-one percent goes in to the city, and we still show a shortfall. So some analysis has been done, we we have a number that we think is short. So we couldn't have a number without an analysis, and we sent that memo to you early.
So the the allocations, if if we document that there is a shortfall, then we also have to take the steps to tackle it, right? And that's kind of what the next steps are.
Right, and I I don't think that there's any argument that there's going to be next steps, or that there'll be conversations. You'll come to us with a plan about the lands you want to annex, based on your own public process of people who want to get into the UGA and where you think it's most developable, and you'll do all the outreach and and make your proposals. We know that's coming. What we're talking about today is why the forty-one percent of AMI can't be accommodated. It's really a density thing, more than an income thing. Why can that density not be accommodated within the city limits? With rezoning, why, and you're looking at the UGA to do that, we're saying that type of housing, that dense type of housing belongs in the urban core. You're not taking a hundred percent of it, you're taking forty-one percent of it. Goodville's taken forty-one percent of it, Langley's taken forty-one percent of it. We're asking the largest city in Oak Harbor to take forty-one percent of it, and I certainly can point out other neighborhoods that you could rezone to put more of that density in there, right? So we're saying get to forty-one percent of this density, and we can move on to the next phase of the conversation, which is, okay, with this capacity and land analysis capacity in place, what does the city still need? So I hear you say we we are, we need to have that conversation. We're trying to get this first part of the conversation nailed down, so that we can move to that second part of the conversation. Why can you not take forty-one percent?
And I think I want to state that the part of the county's frustration or or anxiety here is that we have to have this thing approved by the end of December of this year. So we need the city of Oak Harbor to say, well, we think that we can get up to X number. But we need the county to help us with this, with Y number, and we need that very soon from the city.
If I can make a general statement, I think the the requirements um for this update on the housing allocation is, I think all cities around um in Western Washington are facing this, is that um there is um a demand or a lack of um land zoned appropriately to to house the zero to fifteen, zero to eighty. And even the land's capacity analysis of both the city and the county identifies that there's shortage of land that can accommodate that type. Whether it's, we understand all the um the sentiment of having um the higher density at the core of the city and elsewhere, but those are not reflective of how the regulations are asking for cities to deal with the issues. Even the county is looking for R4 and high-density lands. And same in the city, and the just zoning something to R4 doesn't make it so. Uh there's lot sizes, there's a a lot accumulations that have to occur, and we're looking at a twenty-year span. So all of this has to occur in twenty years, and I think the requirement that makes it challenging for the next twenty years. So I think it says you have to have this capacity at the beginning of your planning period. So I heard some comments earlier that it comes in phases, and that these development regulations will be done later, or these rezonings. The law says you have to have that capacity at the beginning of the twenty-year period. Get this this land use in. So with our current zoning, with our current possibilities, and with all the tools that's in the CWPP, with all the market factors, we have produced actually a defensible document that's trying to accommodate the most AMI that is possible in the city.
But without rezoning.
With rezoning.
Know what you just said, with current, that's what you just said.
With current regulations, in the sense, we are not changing our zoning regulations. We have plans to go to form-based code that can support different types of forms, but those regulations are not in place. The current zoning regulations are what we have and will have for the next two to three years. Regulations take a long time to go through processes for change, and not done overnight.
That's our problem, okay? That's our problem. We need you to rezone.
We do have to, but.
Process, your docket is open for rezoning. We we adopt, and you have the ability to adopt. Again, like, I, what's hard for me is that this is you taught me this. I learned this from you, so I'm so confused about why we're having this conversation. You adopt the maps when you adopt the comp plan update, and the new maps have the rezoning. And so this process right now, you have all the rezoning you need docketed. You can change those densities right now. When you adopt the concept comprehensive plan, you adopt the new maps with the new zoning that's a part of the comp plan. So that, that's where we're stuck, is when, like, again, if you imagine every single lot in the city built twenty stories, you have all the density potential you need. That's, that could be done. We're not saying that's how it will redevelop, that we're not saying that's how you want it. But to tell us you can't do it, it's not comprehensible to us.
It's, it's not about what we can and cannot do. So there are a lot of cities that are planning beyond the twenty years. And Oak Harbor has plans to do it beyond twenty years. We're not planning only for the twenty-year, and we're not planning for only the twenty-year housing. So you can plan for Oak Harbor to go to sixty thousand, eighty thousand, hundred thousand. Yet, for today's regulations, to meet the twenty-year regulations and to meet the current laws, we have to use what we have currently. All the future capacity that you can ever envision for Oak Harbor or for Western Washington cannot be accommodated in one plan swoop.
I, I understand that, and and we're not asking you to do the next hundred-year plan or fifty-year plan, we're asking you to do the twenty-year plan, right? And what has to happen is that you you can't just say, well, in the future, we're able to do it. You have to say, we've got to get to this number today. What rezoning do we have to do to get to this number today? That is the planning exercise that we're all tasked with doing. And so first, I hear what you're saying, which is we have these plans for the future. And and I think that in that you're thinking about the future, but we've got to get to the planning exercise today. And today's planning exercise is, how do we get forty-one percent of the fifty percent and below AMI into the city limit, into the urban growth area city limits? And and again, to say, and and I to say that all of that growth has to go in the urban growth area, when it is the least likely area to develop, and it's also on the outskirts of town, and it doesn't comply with any of the planning goals, right? It's basically the message to the county that we don't want to do it. That, that is how it sounds, we don't want to do it. And here's also what it sounds like, and I don't, I don't mean to be rude, because I don't think we're these people, but it sounds like we don't want that income. That's what it sounds like to the rest of the county. If you can accommodate all the other growth, but you can't hit the AMI number. And by the way, I think like fifty percent of AMI for a single person is, anybody know, forty-two thousand dollars or something? Maybe that's eighty percent.
I thought I saw sixty.
Sixty thousand. So I want, you think about the wages that the community makes. We're talking about housing for the jobs that you say we can't create. That's who we're trying to get housing for. And to say we're going to put it in the least likely area to redevelop, the urban growth area. How is that supposed to be interpreted by your own citizens? You don't want them? Because that's what it sounds like.
When did we say we wanted all the density to go in the UGA?
Um, you should have been at some of our planning meetings.
It was, it uh uh it's, it's in the fact that you said that only twenty, you can only do twenty-five percent, you cannot do. And and that seventy percent would need to go into the UGA, that's, that's the message we were giving.
To us, it also said that this is where it has to go. And and also in your letter, it said that we're going to move forward with planning if we can't agree. And I'm again reminding you that you can't, you can't do that. So we've got to figure out how to get on the same page about how you're going to get this number in there. If you can rezone the triangle to meet some of the density goals, then you can rezone some of the area up by Olympic View. You could rezone some of the areas over by the high school. You can rezone other areas to say, we're going to make this denser housing. If you can do it in one place, which you've acknowledged you can do, why can you not do it in another place to hit your forty percent AMI, forty-one percent AMI number? By the way, I'll take forty. Bray can make forty work.
I wasn't hoping to get technical, and we don't have a consultant here who did the LCA. So they have identified areas where we can have residential capacity. So there's a lot of areas in town, and if you look at the the land's capacity analysis, the properties that have been identified for redevelopment, and it has taken into account what the state allows for redevelopment on smaller lots. So I think the current LCA has pushed now, I think the idea that you can just rezone and get numbers, I think that's where there is it, the the line is not clear. You just can't rezone and get numbers. I think that's where we're trying to avoid. Creating numbers, a numbers game of accommodating this much, and just in, just because you can reason on it and just put, because you can write regulations and account for it, seems to maybe get you past the line now. And if it's not realistic, and if it doesn't happen, the next allocations, it puts you that much farther back, and so on and so forth. So everything that you do on paper doesn't pan out, and we know it doesn't pan out, that well, when it comes to implementation from the dozens of things that we try to do that way. So you have to accommodate for these market factors, which are accounted in the countywide planning policies, which have been accounted in our current LCA. So we are saying that it just by rezoning, or by just accounting for twenty-story buildings, you can't just stake up numbers.
So what, if if I'm understanding what you're saying, the, the city today could say, okay, we're, we will change the height limit to ten stories all over town, boom, problem solved. That solves the county's problem of saying we we were able to make this number, but then the city is stuck with ten-story buildings in all of city, and so we have to be able to live with the result of whatever we are giving you. So, yeah, we can make up a number, and that will solve the county's problem in terms of this particular hearing with with Commerce, but in the meantime, we have to be able to live with the results of whatever hypothetical we are putting out there. And so we, what, what we need to do is put something forward that is realistic, that we can live with, that you know, I mean, we 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 understand, we're the city, and we are going to have to endure probably a little more density than those of us who grew up there would like. But that's just, that's reality, and and I mean, yeah, we've had so many brainstorming sessions about how we might do that. I think the the disconnect is in the, the theoretical versus the reality.
Well, none of us can control, you know, which developer is going to come in and want to put in a a set of duplexes on this particular block fifteen years from now. None of us can control that. All we can do is establish, is to create a foundation, so that if there's someone who wants to do that, it would be legal for them to do that. That's, that's the most that we can do. What we're asking for the city is for you to change your zoning, so that if somebody fifteen years from now wants to do that, they would be able to, and then we can, in coming up with our numbers, we can plan that potentially this could happen.
I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, I'm also, but I I see it from our perspective as well. And I guess what I'm asking is, your request of us was to go into mediation, and we're working now. We went to mediators, and they're going back to the Department of Commerce to get some clarification. So if we need to be moved in one direction, or you need to be moved in one direction, we're going to get that feedback.
Can we get some feedback on these media, these mediators are not planning people, correct?
They go to the Department of Commerce, though.
We need, we, we need planner, like somebody who understands GMA. And also, I mean, I I appreciate we put mediation out there, because we thought that we were getting a land use expert, and we're not. But, but, and and I'm trying to say this with with kindness, the county doesn't need to mediate. The county has the authority to simply tell you what you're doing. That authority rests with us. We're trying to negotiate, right, to get the best outcome for the county, and when we say the county, that's not an entity separate from the city. The city is an entity within the county. So if we get a bad outcome for a city, we got a bad outcome for a county. I mean, this is not like an us versus you scenario. You are us. Just like Island County is part of the state of Washington, and the state of Washington is part of the United States of America. You're not your own country, you're not your own state, you're not your own county. We want, we want for you to have the most vibrant community that you can have. Uh, you know, Mayor Protem's point is that obviously ten-story buildings is not desirable for anyone. But the other point is, and this is, I'm further along in the emotional journey on this, because I had it early in our process. Nobody likes this GMA who lives in the real world. It doesn't work for the real world. Nobody likes it who lives in a city. Oh, by the way, we're going to social engineer where people live, and then we're going to write a policy that says we should be equitable. And we should allow people access to open space, that we're going to put all the people who have lower incomes into urban areas and make them live in apartments, right? The whole thing is schizophrenic. The entire GMA does not take into account our unique land conditions of being on an island. Does not take in account the fact that we have an entire island without an urban growth area, which is a problem for our county and puts more pressure on the cities. The whole structure is flawed for reality. And yet, we don't get to go to court and say, by the way, legislature, you guys need to figure out what message you're trying to send, because this isn't working in reality. You're not wrong in saying it's not working. We're not wrong in saying it doesn't matter. We've got to do this exercise, because we're required to do it by the state. And so let's figure out the best possible way to get the best possible outcome for the city and for the county in which the city is a part of, so that we can turn in something that serves our citizens well. One of the pre-agreed-upon things was how do we get forty-one percent? That leaves, I don't know if I can do really fast math, but like fifty-nine is in that, fifty-nine percent of AMI that's not being required of you. Right? If you say it in reverse, it's not that huge of an ass. Forty-one percent, zone for forty-one percent of AMI, get forty-one percent of that.
Zero to fifty percent.
Zero to fifty percent. Into your urban growth area, into your city limits. That's what we're asking to do. And then we can agree to that and get some numbers that do that, and then we'll have a conversation about how much capacity is still needed for commercials, which, you know, you can ask for commercial expansion, I I, we just have to justify it. We've talked about land swaps. Are are there lands that have zoning on it right now that are just not appropriate for redevelopment, that you that are just not appropriate for redevelopment that you can swap with with the you move this UJ portion from here over to there. That doesn't even count as an expansion. That's a land swap. So there you get more capacity without even growing your UGA. You're just switching undevelopable lands for developable lands. We've said that, like it's hard to understand why we're stuck. Because we're just trying to get this density, forty one percent of required density to the city to support workforce, to support different income levels. It's where the services are. It is also hard, I know for Oak Harbor to have to watch other communities be quaint and cute and and snobby towards us. It's hard to watch that when Oak Harbor has to carry the burden of being the biggest city in Island County. Because that's not how we see ourselves. It is the functional role you have to play. If you are Bellingham and Mount Vernon and Everett and Winachi and Yakima and Kate Seattle and Tacoma and Olympia, all of those places are the largest city in their counties. And all of those communities are feeling like you're feeling right now, which is why do we get all this? I I'm empathetic. I don't like it either. But it is what has to happen under this framework that we cannot change. We don't get to change it. So we have to do it.
So I'd like to give the other uh officials a chance to speak up if they'd like to. Um, uh, Councilmember Marshall, do you have any thoughts that you wanted to share?
I I guess I'm just still a little unclear if we're including the UGA and the UGA will become part of city limits, that is part of our city at that particular time. That's how we are going to absorb some of that lower AMI. I mean, it's we cannot put all forty one percent, in my opinion, based upon the the land capacity analysis that we've already done. And and to speak to Councilmember Heisen's point of of still having a livable city within our current city limits, we leave. If the UGA is part of that plan and we're going to develop to a city, city densities. We need to be able to plan for part of that that lower AMI in in that area as well, you know, and that speaks to Commissioner Johnson's point too, is we can't, if you're going to have we don't want to cram everybody into the city. Did and we had the opportunity for green space. The city is growing. And so that that means that we're we're growing our our infrastructure is going to be there. The the way that they our planning department is planning, it's not just going to be simply residents, but there will be some services that'll be out there, you know, for those residents as well. We have a public transportation system. And there's opportunities. They they should have the same access to that. We we just can't cram everybody into the city and still have a we we have to take into account the residents are already there and and what they've invested into their homes and in their neighborhoods and stuff. It's just not realistic to say we're going to start putting four or five story buildings throughout town. It's just.
Where are you going to put the other fifty nine percent of of the AMI requirement? I mean, you're saying you you can't put the forty one percent in there. So is your plan to put the difference between twenty five percent and forty one percent and the additional fifty nine percent?
So what I I've heard through past conversations, right, is we have to meet these numbers. And so development's going to happen the way development happens and we're going to allow for some of that. But if we can can factor in the UGA and then have be able to meet the numbers, then development's going to happen the way it's going to happen. We so we're not we're not saying that they're going to be exclusively out there, but we can then meet those numbers.
But the fifty, this is where I'm confused still. The fifty nine percent, the remaining amount of AMI, if you don't, if you say we can't fit the forty one percent in there. Right? We're we're already acknowledging that fifty nine percent has to go someplace else. So the UGA is not not being used for density. There's fifty nine percent of this AMI number that has to go somewhere. We're saying you got to take forty one percent of that, redevelop forty one percent. To say we can't take forty one percent is now pushing, I can't do the math between twenty five, forty one and fifty nine. That's too much, but it's a larger number. So if that would have to go, where is that all going? So you're going to say that's the UGA and the UGA expansion and and that puts the density out on the edges, not in the urban core and cities develop urban core outward, right? And and density is in and then outward. You can't fit forty one percent. You're saying it's the fifty nine plus the difference that all goes in the UGA? Do you see where we're concerned on that now? I'm not like arguing with you. I'm saying if the vision is we can't fit it all. Right, we're asking you to take forty one percent of that AMI number.
Forty one percent of the entire county AMI.
For for, no, 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 of your numbers, of your numbers, forty one percent of your numbers are zero to fifty percent AMI. And so we have to find a place to put those people who only make zero to fifty percent of AMI. Did you have anything else?
No.
But I'm, I still got to put that fifty nine percent somewhere.
Commissioner St. Clair. Thank you. Um, I'm going to go back a little bit. There was a question of where we got the confusion and the confusion comes from me when the letter that you said affirmed that you stand by the existing LCA analysis and that's where we had a difference of opinion mayor. So that was one of the complete pieces that had me confused of we're not. When we had one letter saying one thing and then we have in this room, different things, we talked about the fifty five and forty one percent and at one point had agreement. And then when your plant, uh, planning director comes in and he says, we can't read, this is what also confuses me. We can't plan to put those rezones into our plan and yet that's what this exact process allows for is incomprehensive planning. You could dock it those, so they become potential future opportunities for growth. So I I what confuses me is when I'm getting mixed messages and that was a mixed message. When I hear you're willing to do this and accommodated in the UGA and then I hear, but we're not going to dock it any of that. That's a mixed message to us. If you, if you hear my, how I'm hearing it.
I guess. Is that what we said? I I guess I'm in a different place than you are.
And that's fair. So I just, and and I'm just going to point out where I'm getting some different messaging. Um, the other piece I want to just reference is uh, in the letter that was sent, it is clear that within UGAs, in order to plan for growth, including parts of the forty one percent, you must ensure the necessary urban services are in place. So that has to also be in place. Extension of the water system, the sewer system, those other things have to be in place if there's going to be growth within that UGA that accommodates those numbers.
There has to be a plan for.
Yes, not that the, not that the infrastructure is already in place. It just has to be in your plan that the water system will go out to the north uh, east corner of the city. The water will extend to here, that there is a planned way to accommodate and support growth with your infrastructure. And I I I have not been as privy to the in-depth conversations, but in the materials I've read and received, I haven't heard that plan and that willingness to extend services so that the the near, the UGA that's going to be nearest to the city will be able to accommodate those growth. So I just wanted to, I don't want to debate the points here. I just simply wanted to point out where I'm getting mixed messages. Councilmember Arms, do you have anything?
Well, yeah, I'm a little confused about it all, but anyway, um, the thing is, we have been doing a lot of growth. Because in the seven years I've been here, we've developed a lot. And I, you know, you go down the street, it's everywhere. Part of the problem is the way we developed before. Those those areas are stuck now. We can't use them. They're either by a church or by the the school district. So it really, at, you know, really it kind of gives us a short window of where we're going to put them. You know, we can't put everything downtown. And in the area I live, I mean, it just went exponentially and you go down Oak Harbor Road, it's the same way. We are building, but the problem is how are we going to accommodate all that? And I understand we have to go to this plan, but I'm saying this is the problem with the plan is that we have, we we changed it to ADUs. We changed our zoning. We have done some of those things. And you know, a lot of those areas are blocked because they're owned by other people. Not something the city can come in and say, well, Melanie, I'd like that, so I'm taking this. And this is part of the problem. A lot of it is with school. We have a prime real estate that we could use, but school property. So there we are. We could build all this wonderful stuff if we didn't have this problem. That is part of our problem. It's it's a lot of our available land is already taken up by people that don't have a house or whatever. This is the school district. This is churches. This is all these that have taken our available land. And now we're trying to put everything. Look at Barrington. She is going up like whatever. And we are stuck and we're not trying to be stuck, but that's, that's how I feel. You're asking us, I mean, I've looked in the city and even where we live, it's crazy.
Yeah, we discounted that though, right? Church lands, the school land, that's not in the land's capacity analysis. So so we're not, we understand that that's not redevelopable land. That's in the plan.
Yes, that's us for policies.
Right. So so that's not the restrict, those lands aren't really in the way because we know that they're that they're not designed to be developed.
Yeah, we know they're there. Well, I do know that, but the problem is it does restrict us whether we want to or not. You go down midway there, you will see all that land that we could use. It does restrict us.
Well, but I what I'm trying, what I was clarifying is that in the allocation of housing that that that's done in the buildable lands analysis. We're basing that on the reality that those lands aren't designed to be redeveloped. We we, and I just wanted to make sure that that was still a true fact, that that nowhere in this conversation are we anticipating, nor did we plan for redevelopment of properties that could not be developed. That pressure doesn't exist in, that's not true pressure in the sense that we're saying you, we're counting on that to redevelop. We know it won't.
I get what you're saying, but I'm also saying, even though you all decided it, I'm looking at it from my perspective of where I live and where I'm at, that it does restrict us because with that land being available, we could have popped this and been done with it and said, we have everything. And you know, we're we're negotiating, but you know, it takes time to figure that out. That's prime real estate we're losing.
I want to just acknowledge what Councilmember Arms just said about the growth that you have experienced. I mean, we acknowledge you're going to have huge growth from the future, but um, just since two thousand, your population has increased by twenty six percent. And and yeah, we we acknowledge that. It's it's all, you've had a lot of people come in and you're going to have a lot more in.
Yeah, and to Commissioner St. Clair's point, just with respect to the water and sewer resources, we're already looking at this through our Public Works Department. Our Public Works Director is already, but we're looking at what the needs are going to be in that UGA area, area for the plan process, the planning process. So but we're already looking to to provide those resources.
So to clarify, all our utility plans, plans for the UGA. So we plan to accommodate services in the UGA. They're not in place. They get extended as development occurs, but we do plan to extend services there and make sure that the capacity is there in the pipe, et cetera, et cetera, to handle that.
Thank you. Um, uh, Councilmember Stuckey.
Why not? Why not? I wish we never would have agreed to the fifty five hundred housing units. By the way, I kind of commit, agree with Commissioner Johnson. That's a bit of a stretch and but here we are now. Um. One thing that came up in discussions and I'm asking basic questions here. Right now, we don't provide sewer and utilities outside of city limits. You have to annex. Is that correct? What would it take to change that? Okay, so it is, so it is possible that, that we could do that, be able to provide utilities outside of city limits. Because when you annex, and of course, when you're talking about now we need sidewalks, now we need certain requirements. So we we can do that. It's legally, we just do take an interlocal.
Take an interlocal.
Okay. When they talk about, you know, we had some beautiful renderings that went up about downtown. Maybe you folks saw that.
Or they were lovely.
They were lovely. They were lovely. They were lovely. I wish everyone thought they were lovely.
I did, but I don't.
You know, and and admittedly, there was a lot of people, the social media guy, who said, oh, my gosh, five story buildings downtown, that's way too much. So I also agree that, you know, this is a direction that not everybody wants, but it's not the quaint little town. When we're talking about fixing this mathematical problem with higher rezoning, the triangle and everything. First of all, if we do rezone, obviously someone has to build it. I mean, this is just plans. I mean, knocking down a bunch of buildings, buying the property, knock down a bunch of buildings, putting up this ten stories or whatever, still someone has to do it. These are just plans.
They have to want to.
They have to want to. May or may not make sense, but when it comes to these rezones that the county's asking for, is there a legal reason why we can't do it? They're asking us to look at rezone and height requirements. Is there any legal reason why we can't? I understand that we are, but it sounds like we need to have that done sooner rather than later.
Please.
It's just asking it to be in your plan.
Sure.
That then gets adopted as as docketed.
I thought that was part of the problem.
Asking for ten story and twenty.
Nine?
No. Hyperbole, some of the hyperbole that's there. We're asking for reasonable strategies in your plan that helps us I identify both the the population growth that we all agreed to last year and the AMI driven by the HAP tool.
And I guess I'm kind of not being a planner, just looking at it from what you guys are asking for. I just, I'm struggling with why that's not possible. This is talking as this person with the city.
I I think this is better in, this is more technical than I want to answer because it is an LCA question. So the land's capacity analysis is done, asked for existing methodology. Anything that we do to accommodate more or any criteria that we think of from here onwards is actually deviating from policy. And we're getting into the hypothetical because currently, you know, the product that we have generated is asked for with the policy. That's a defensible product.
Not for us, though. That's what I'm trying to say. Not for, we have to get to that closer to that number. So if you continue to say this is what it's based on today without accommodating future changes, we don't have a defensible document.
So the city has done in its document what it can change. Now, what happens to happen, what what needs to happen in the UGA is the point of difference between the agencies.
No, Cap. No, that's not the point of difference. The point of difference is that you think it's happening in the UGA and we think you need to accommodate forty one percent of AMI in the city. That is the point of difference. You keep telling us, this is it, I've found it. This is it. You keep saying it's got to go in the UGA. I don't understand why you'd want to extend urban services out to the UGA because the policies require sequential annexation. So if you extend services out into the urban growth area, in order to get beyond that for any kind of expansion, you're going to have to annex that all in anyway. You can't create a dominant, so you don't have sidewalks. So now you're going to have an area in your city without sidewalks. How's that working out up by Olympic View for those neighborhoods? Why would you voluntarily do that to your own community? But the issue we're having is forty one percent AMI in the city level. That is what this conversation is about. That UGA can accommodate forty nine percent, fifty nine percent. You they the expansion can accommodate some of that, but you've got to take forty one percent. That is what this
Of the zero to fifty.
About, putting that in the city. That is all this is about. So you keep saying it's UGA negotiation. I guess what I would say in the tone that you're hearing, we're not negotiating. You will take forty one percent. That is the bottom line of this conversation and we hold the authority to require that and more. We're trying to work with you, but you keep putting up barriers. That is an artificial one. You just told the council member you could do it. And we're telling you, not only can you, you need to and you will.
The forty one percent, I think, was a redistribution of the AMI in the second sequence that the letter, the county sent the letter. It's not part of the county.
It's the HAP tool that you agreed to. It's the output of the HAP.
It's the HAP tool reused for the numbers that was not intended to be used for. So the HAP tool gave the distribution, the original distribution of the AMI for the county and the city. And that's it. That's all was agreed upon. Letter that the county said, sent, took those numbers, put it back into the HAP tool, which is not meant to do. The HAP tool was not meant to do that. And redistribute it. I don't know why. Nobody agreed on that really. It's not a, it's not a methodology. It's not agreed anywhere to do that. And that was a convenient way of redistributing the AMI, which is not a requirement. It's not a part of any policy. It's not part of any requirement. It was not part of any. It's not part of any requirement. It was not part of any goal. So to state that, I think, is a wrong perspective to start off because it's our inability to meet these AMI that's bringing us to this discussion.
So you have the ability to meet above fifty percent AMI?
Some our capacity has some um analysis on all the different ranges that we can accommodate.
So then take some of the high AMI and put the lower AMI in there. Why are you refusing to take the AMI numbers, the density numbers, the lower income numbers as a community? Why will you only take higher income people?
That's the numbers that he gave us, the numbers that he gave us.
The UGA property comes into the city, then the AMI will be in the city. We need the UGA properties to accommodate the growth. That's what we can't do right now. That's what the UGA is for. So it seems like we're separating the UGA for convenience when we want to. We're saying it's part of the city when we want to. We're saying, let's annex it. Let's annex all the developable land into the city. We don't need to go through a process. We can do it with the county in a local agreement. First step is bring it all into the city. And in the city, you can do UGA densities, uh, not UGA, you can do urban densities, which is what everybody wants, I think.
Mm hmm.
Right? So to say that don't put densities in the UGA seems like why? Because we're all looking for density. We're looking for land. We're looking for all options. There's so much of backlog. We can take anything and any development.
Do not put density in the UGA. In fact, we, my conversation with Councilman Mar- Marshall was where are you going to put the fifty nine percent if you don't put it in the UGA? So there was an acknowledgement, right? That some of that is already going in the UGA. What we are saying is you have to take forty one percent in your existing city limit somewhere by rezoning because you're going to have to rezon the UGA anyway. So why? Help me understand why, if you're already taking fifty nine percent there, you want to put the other with the math.
Carry the one.
Yeah, whatever is remaining needs to be accommodated in in the UGA. Basically, that's what it is. It's because our current landscape capacity analysis, we just simply don't have.
If you can rezone the single family homes that primarily make up your UGA right now, why can you not rezone the single family homes that are existing in your urban core? What is the emotional difference to you about rezoning homes up by Hill or Olympic View versus rezoning zone in that Hillcrest area that is already developed in the UGA? Both of those require redevelopment. So why do you not want them to redevelop in your urban core? Why do you want them? Why do you want to push all that growth to the urban growth area, reminding you again, we don't have to accept urban growth expansion? So you, so that number is still absorbed by what's in your UGA right now. Why do you think those neighborhoods are more likely to redevelop than interior neighborhoods?
So I want to go back to Councilmember Stuckey had the floor and.
No, no, I mean, I didn't have much more to add other than it just seems like if we're need to do a little rezoning for what could be hypothetical or couldn't. I understand that there's a little more technical to it, but as council, we're the policymakers. We have the ability to make the policy to adjust for what we need, what they're asking for. Why can't we just do it? I mean, I know I'm oversimplifying it and I know I'm almost sounding like I'm pitching for the county here. But why not? It still doesn't mean that we're going to get the ten story buildings up.
That consultants nor staff are policymakers. We may, we have that conversation with our staff. We are the policymakers.
Correct.
We, as the elected officials are the, and that's what I hear you saying, Brian.
That's what I'm saying.
Policymakers in this room.
We rely on the act, you know, we've worked with the experts. We work with the experts because I'm certainly not a land expert, but we're the policymakers. It seems like it would be up to us to make the policy to get what we are being forced to do one way or another. I mean, you're politely asking politely.
Right.
Yeah, polite, but but I understand that you're not really asking.
Well, we have the authority to not ask.
Correct.
Trying to like have a conversation and I think, I mean, I think that question I still have out there, which is why is it possible to redevelop already developed county pockets in the city and rezone that? Why is Hillcrest eligible for redevelopment under a UGA, but areas within the existing city limit right now are not? How can that be true?
I don't understand. I didn't say that any of the Hillcrest area were.
It's in the UGA. So what's left of UGA is some undeveloped land and predominantly developed land. So in order to accomplish the AMI number, you have to rezone on already developed land.
Good question. Can I clarify? The annexation is only for developable land, not the already developed. I think the request was to to annex only developable land, not the already developed land. Because annexing the already developed land is uh doesn't make sense at this time.
But that's that's included in your UGA calculations. That should be.
It is in our UGA calculations.
Right, that's right. So what we are saying is that that is your land. That is for the city to take for growth and development. That the UGA from a county perspective and and from when I was, from the city perspective was on the planning commission, I thought of that as mine. We can do what we want in that UGA area. It is ours to take and annex and develop that city standard. You can put this, you can put higher development zoning on top of the UGA. If you if you annex that in and you could do it, you could do it now for planning purposes and say you're going to annex it.
Commissioner Johnson, you've already acknowledged that we could potentially take something like that and and do a land swap for undeveloped, undeveloped land, which will allow us to get an increased density. But but to Cap's point, though, is when we agreed to these numbers using the HAP tool, there was no requirement of forty one percent being within current city limits. It was, these are the numbers. This is the HAP tool. This is what you're going to meet in terms of AMI. But there was no requirement to say, okay, of that now forty one percent has got to be within your current city limits. It was, this is what we're agreeing to and then we're going to take a look at. And so we did our due diligence. We did the land capacity analysis. We agreed to maximum density. Um, and then we look at, okay, well, this is how much of that lower AMI in in each category we could take. And then this is what our shortfall is. And that shortfall is what we're now having to address in terms of UGA expansion.
I guess, um.
We're changing the rules after the games already started playing, though, in terms of.
We don't think that's true. So.
But but the forty one percent is a new requirement that was not.
State.
State.
He didn't change those. This is from the state. They said they, this is the first year where they've said you have to take a specific allocation of each income level. Do I think this is going to play out like the policymakers in Olympia think it's going to? No, I think the same thing. I think on the ground, development rules will ultimately rule. I also asked that question about why can't we just swap out undeveloped area or developed areas for undeveloped and we're not allowed to do that? So that's stuck in the UGA, those areas that like Hillcrest, they're stuck in there and they're not swappable. But what is swappable is like there's a piece of land out on Crescent Harbor. What are you going to do with that? You don't do that. Get something you can use, right? So there's some properties that like if it has a huge wetland on it, let's just take that out of the mix and say, this is five acres. We're not going to be able to develop. We want five developable acres and we're going to preserve this wetland if we haven't already done that. I don't, I don't know. But but I mean, that's what we're saying is things that can't be developed. Swap that for lands that can be developed. That's not even an expansion conversation. But we we can't swap those already developed lands because I already tried that and Cap told me I broke ten laws. It's a bad idea. So sometimes I'm wrong.
So so Jim, Cap, looking at both of you, I think what I'm hearing is let's do the rezoning. I'm 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 just playing this out with you guys because this will address their forty one percent concern. We can't promise that we're ever going to be able to accommodate that. We're just playing a numbers game, which is what we've been very upfront about, that this is just a numbers game if this is what we do. Um, and but it it fixes the the overall comp plan that the county is worried about. Um, and then I think that we just have a sidebar conversation back at the city with our consultants and um, but that way we're partnering with them and working in good faith to move the plan forward. But I mean, I think that we're in agreement, all of us are as a council too, that we can rezone all we want, but that's not going to come to fruition.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Marrow.
Yes, I'm brand new to this process. So the technical details, I'm not pretty too and deep in in, you know, proficient, proficient proficiency, but I will observe this. As a little expression, all politics is local. And whenever we're doing anything about rezoning, which I generally support, uh, in order to make this plan, um, at the granular level, you're dealing with individuals' lives and businesses. And uh, and there has to be a substantial buy-in for somebody to like redevelop. It's extremely expensive to redevelop anything. You got to tear everything down hollow away. I mean, it's just incredibly um involved and expensive. So the thing that concerns me is we develop a plan and we agree to it and it becomes legally binding, so to speak, as far as meeting the requirement from the state and the county. And um, and then it was not carefully considered. And so along comes a developer or a property owner or something, and they want to do something that's extremely detrimental based on what we accepted as a plan. So it's called unintended consequences. So um, I'm not saying don't do a plan. I'm just describing that once you create a legally binding document and somebody wants to do something with it from outside, uh, the government, that is to say, to take advantage of it, there's there's not too much recourse that uh, we have to negate it. So somebody said, I mean, twenty, I want to build a twenty story building, you know, I'm saying. I know, I know, but I'm just using that extreme example. I'm using this hyperbole to make the point that uh, there's going to be somebody saying, well, you know, I'm sitting on, you know, a hundred million dollars. I just uh moved from Kuwait, Kuwait or Vegas and uh, and I've got the money and I'm going to do it. So uh, I say the rezoning pieces, I think apparently it's going to, it's going to be necessary for the plan, but the the reasoning has to be done extremely carefully because uh, the possible legal unintended consequences. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Weisner.
Trying to keep it short because we only have five minutes left. So reality is, I just want to make a statement and and it, I don't know that this necessarily benefits either party, so either party can jump in and correct me if my statements incorrect. I'm just sitting here doing the math in my head and seems to me that multifamily takes up typically less of a footprint than single family homes, right? So just want to make sure we're all conscious of understanding that by moving more and more of the multifamily into the city core, we ultimately are going to be needing more and more property in the UGA to to deal with the single family side of things, right? Because if we're going to move a lot of numbers out into the UGA that's multifamily, that's going to take up less square footage than if we're going to be expecting that to be a higher percentage of single family out in the UGA because we're moving that multifamily into the city core. If that's not a trick, correct statement, just correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I think I think that that's true, but I think that that's probably a problem for the next Board of County Commissioners.
Well, it's not because they are going to make a recommendation to us after they achieve this goal to say, okay, now we've done this. We've displaced more single family homes. We've got to hit these numbers. Where where is that housing going to go? Our own numbers show, our own analysis, which was pretty aggressive in terms of density, still shows that you have a shortfall in what you need in the UGA. And we've we've given those numbers to you. So I think what you're saying is that the board should expect a request for a UGA expansion. I do not think we will be shocked when we receive that. I do not think if we use the justification that we're requiring that that we're going to have a lot of pushback about that. What we want to do is just make sure whatever's requested is justifiable so that we can defend it so we don't have a setback like we had the last time we tried this. And and so we are anticipating further conversations with the city about the land that you need.
So in other words, my statement is is kind of a correct statement that may be a justification behind some of that conversation.
Precursor.
It, I I heard what you said.
I do want to point out that the county has to also address density in our, and there's new legislation that's probably going to move through this year on our raids or lammers, whatever you want to. So even in the unincorporated areas of the counties, there is expectation that we accommodate uh, middle housing, multifamily housing where we can under the new legislation. So this is not solely on the, on a burden that our municipalities bear. The unincorporated counties in our state also have to bear this. That said, the the constraining factor is always urban services and the need to provide density where there is urban services and and the normal things that come with that.
Well, because let's face it, not only are we going to take up more square footage with single family than we will with multifamily, but we are going to be displacing some of that eighty percent, eighty plus percent AMI, right? That we're going to have to compensate for.
Like you've seen, like you've seen happen already across the state and other other communities around our state.
Just wanted to make sure I'm making a correct statement there. Thank you.
And I should say also, we each talked about it at different times at different workshops. The county has rural economic development funds. The county, like the mayor sits on the regional transportation policy board. We've each acknowledged, like, look, if Oak Harbor has to continue to play this role, that we need to step up more aggressively with our financial support through these funds that we have. We know, we understand what is being asked. The other part about redeveloping in the core a little bit is that those are, those are rural county dollars that can go to redoing infrastructure that's aging, right? That knows that aging infrastructure that has to get replaced at some point. The best way to do that is through redevelopment. You don't have aging infrastructure where you haven't put it in yet. So I mean, there are some benefits to redevelopment in the core. And we have a desire to partner even on the financial side for some of these impacts that are coming your way as of this growth. And I I don't want the city to feel like you get the burden one hundred percent without partners. We see the value that you're playing to the entire county. I think if I would encourage our friends on South Wibby even, Kano is not, does not do this. South Wibby to recognize the value that Oak Harbor brings because it absorbs that density and allows rural lifestyle to exist. And when you're walking in your big open spaces and on your five acre lots, what you need to do is not say, oh, I'm glad I don't live in Oak Harbor. What you need to do is say thank you to the community that is making that possible.
It's what?
And financially, we recognize that too, and we want to partner with those funds that we have.
And I think where she's referencing the 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 other things like uh, transportation concurrency. We want to make sure that we recognize your growth and how that plays out in prioritization of our transportation pri- uh, concurrency as we go into this. We've talked a lot about making sure as we see where growth occurs that we recognize as well that we support that growth in the tools that we have in our toolbox.
And maybe, Cap, we can revitalize that Molina to West Beach Trail and use that as an excuse to get some sidewalks in in those areas on busy roads where we don't have sidewalks, right? So those are the kind of ideas where it's like, look, we we have this mix of county city. Where are those partnership opportunities to improve the quality of life for citizens?
Okay, so what I'm hearing, I want to bring this all together. What I'm hearing, and please tell me if I'm misunder, misreading the room. What I'm hearing is that the Oak Harbor City Council is willing to consider an infill strategy, including rezoning, to accommodate more of the zero to fifty percent income levels within your city limits and that the county and city staff will work together then to identify proposals for the UGA and expansion to further the total goals that we have. Yes, our shared goals. Thank you. Anything else from anybody? Yes, yes, Councilmember.
I was reflecting on how it appears when a proposal is put before the state and then it's kicked back. So there's an expression about legislative bodies that they're unable to govern. So we, uh, I think it's basically essential for us to come with an approvable plan before we go to the state as opposed to, because it uh, is an expression, egg on our face. Is that the, is that proper term? But anyway, we don't want to have that happen. Uh, and I think probably it's one time so far it's been kicked back.
Well, yeah, it's a big time. We look like four days is on.
I I won't comment on, I won't comment on that. But anyway, I think, I think the uh, uh, that we need to get it right. That's all.
Thank you. Well, I am extremely grateful for the conversation. I think it was really, really valuable. Um, and so um, do you want to?
Sure. So I was just going to say thank you again for your time today and our special city council meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. And the Board of Island County Commissioners is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.